We've set an agenda, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda over. We have a motion, do you have a motion now?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a motion being approved. Second, we'll roll up all this, start with Miss Madrow.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye, Angie?
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, we'll move on to committee reports.
None.
Saying none. Student members' reports?
It's in your packet.
Oh, okay. All that we have in our folder, we don't think we'll get it. We'll go to the principals' report.
This is also in your packet. So we have two staff members here tonight, we have Brooke Place. Brooke is in the PE Health Department, she teaches senior seminar and PE and she's our varsity girls volleyball coach. And then Julie Kozinski, we've met quite a few times here for math and soccer starting up, so she's gonna be pretty busy here coming up hopefully, so. Um, when you get a chance all the way out tonight, check out this room over here. We have turned this into our Life Skills and Transition sensory room. So some of the students with disabilities in those classes sometimes need that time to more level out. There's all kinds of really cool things in there that Melissa Russell, Jean Nevers, and other members of the department have added into that room. And then Ryan Whitnour installed a real nice swing for them in there. I think it's like four hundred pound capacity, so if you feel the need to try it out, not that he might weigh like that, but it's hooked up to the metal up there, but he did a really nice job. I keep trying to get Matt Lauer, I said, get all that weight, he checked it out, he's like, no, not doing it, but. Anyway, um, it's really nice, so if you get a chance, peek in there, okay? Um, a couple of things, professional development. Uh, our last teacher in-service day, Lisa Ward from the Illinois State Board of Education came. She's a content area specialist, was fabulous, and brought in some new techniques, some fresh ideas to do collaborative group work. Not like long-term projects, but, um, you know, five and ten-minute group work activities to establish focus, student engagement. Um, she did some really neat activities to try to get kids to work together with different kids in grouping to try to knock out some of the bullying, um, social emotional stuff along with content. So she was really great, was very hands-on, teachers were up and moving and, um, you know, involved in the activities and she was really, really good, so. And it's nice because it's free and we like free presentations, they were awesome, but she came in and she did a fantastic job. She also goes to the Scudus, she said, anytime our teachers want to come back and have her observe and check things out, just another really great resource. Couple of academic things, um, the Regional Poetry Out Loud competition at SWIC is tomorrow. Um, Mrs. Asher's freshman, we're outstanding this year, earned two to three spots for the competition. Mrs. Westbecker and Mrs. Asher are taking three students, Zach Bowman, Jackson Dirks, and Brett Harris, uh, to the competition and it'll be at the Schmidt Arts Center at four P M. So hopefully we can get a couple of them or at least one of them to get to the state competition. On Thursday, February first, uh, the students in the vocational classes for Doug Cos, Ryan Whitnour, and J.R. Breitlinger participated in H VAC presentations that SWIC came in and put on. Um, the presentation was about the overall field, career future. Uh, this is currently a field with more jobs than people enter in. So we have a lot of very talented students, so I think this was a great presentation for our students. Um, a lot of them, there was also talk about, you know, should they go into strictly H VAC? Should they get an associate's degree in just something more individual like welding or, um, something again more specific? But, um, if you can get an overall degree in H VAC and have more of those skills, the jobs are apparently endless. So it was some really good information for our kids. Uh, congratulations to FFA Record Book winners who won at the sectional level last week. Taylor Miller won for veterinarian science, Nathan Irwin in fruit production, Mackenzie Goddard in ag sales entrepreneurship. All three will be advancing to the district competition. They are judged on how many hours they have put in, skills and competencies learned, money invested and earned, how accurately they keep the records. Taylor and Nathan have been working on their books since freshman year. Um, congratulations to the Wise academic team, outstanding. Um, Mrs. Karen Miller took them to the competition in computer science, Justin Providence earned a third place medal in chemistry. We got a first place medal by Matthew Bicegel. In physics, we have third place finished by Charlie Parish. A second place finished with a tie between between Ben Nahas and Matt Bicegel. In engineering graphics, first place went to Ethan Alexander. In English, second place tied between Lenny Barshak and Brett Harris. And first place went to Alexis Hegi. In biology, third place went to Greg Gagnon, second place to Kayla Miller, and first place to Brett Harris. In math, third place went to Grace Reader, second place to Justin Providence, and first place to Charlie Parish. In our division of Freeburg High School earned the first place trophy and advanced to McHenry in March. Um, and then if you look, when you get a chance, I'm not gonna read through all this, but this came through today from Mrs. Miller. It was actually sent to us by a teacher from another district talking about how Freeburg fared overall in state. Um, they finished second behind O'Fallon in St. Clair County by like point eight of a point. And then nineteenth overall in state, but if you look at all the schools above us, they have thousands of students in their population. So for a small school like us to compete at that level, that was pretty awesome. So when you get a chance, you can look through that. And that is just, I'm super excited for all of our staff because there's so many staff members that work hard and contribute with these kids and I think that's just outstanding for our school, super exciting news. And we got more news today that was really awesome as well. The science testing scores came back, Freeburg finished at seventy-one percent, which was second highest in the county. And then overall, they finished in the top three percent for the state. So keep up the good work, students and staff. Um, extracurricular stuff. Um, Stephanie Jacobs will be our first female bowler competing in Rockford tomorrow for the staple tournament. So it's, it's a pretty brutal tournament, we got six games, uh, six matches on Friday. If she qualifies out of that group, she's got six more on Saturday. Kind of the same process as the boys, except that they've got to stay here and she's gonna go all the way to Rockford. So she's up there with her parents and then Doug traveled up there as well. Um, varsity girls basketball, playing right now, gonna check the score at the break here hopefully, so good luck to them. They defeated Waterloo on Monday, had a great nail-biter, come-from-behind game against Jerseyville on Tuesday to advance to tonight's game. Uh, congratulations to Charlie Parish on being selected to the IHSA All-State Academic Team. This is sponsored by Caterpillar. Um, twenty-six individuals are selected, they had over four hundred applicants for this, um, this honor. They take thirteen girls and thirteen boys. Um, it's based on grades, team and individual state series participation, extracurricular letters of reference, and he also had to write an essay. So they're traveling to Bloomington for some interviews, they do a video of, of the team, and then there'll be an awards banquet in Bloomington as well in April. I was going back through the history of this, this is far and few between. The last person that I could even remotely find in the history was two thousand and five and that had gone to Ally Alberts. So we don't give very many kids that, that make it to this honor, so congratulations, Charlie. FFA Week is next week. Um, Marissa Modulin has been working with us and with the kids in FFA to come up with a great plan for next week. They're gonna do all kinds of activities for the school, they're gonna do some service projects, they're gonna treat the staff to some good stuff, and should be a very fun week. We got Mr. Midget coming our way and we're gonna have some class penny wars, penny wars coming up to help support, um, the class accounts for paying for graduation, prom, some of those things. And, uh, it's the first time we've tried it, there's gonna be a fun incentive for it and try to get the kids, get the competitive spirit up. Okay, something new, um, because I am so thrilled with the WISE and the testing and the SAT, but I definitely want to keep pushing for more, just like a number of our teachers that are just as crazy type A as I am. Um, so we're going to start doing something, um, to try to track individual student growth. Um, we're gonna be starting that this year, um, we've been talking with, um, Dan Myrdert, John Young, Jeff Alt, who is Mr. Dana, loves it. And, uh, we're gonna be talking with our faculty about this, but we're gonna start doing, um, testing at the freshman level, the sophomore level, and then of course, students have to take the SAT at the junior level. At the freshman level, we're gonna be doing the PSAT eight-nine test and the June sophomores, the PSAT ten test. Now, the reason why we're gonna do this is, um, we got lots of them here. Um, experience in taking these types of tests is probably the number one thing. The good news is, is we do the PSAT eight-nine and ten, we don't report those scores to the state at all. The only ones we have to report are the SAT. And, um, the other really great thing about this is that all three of those tests go through College Board, who then provide the access for students to create accounts for Khan Academy to do free practice. They can do it on their own at home, they can do it with the math and the English departments. Um, that's a really big, big thing, because I don't know if any of your kids have taken SAT practice courses where they're paying three and four hundred dollars, where the, as soon as they start taking these tests as freshmen, they can lock in and start doing practice all the way through, which I think is great. So again, um, going down here, experience in taking these types of tests. Um, all of the tests are part of College Board, which I mentioned. Um, we'll be able to use these scores, um, collect data, follow the students' growth as they go all the way through. Later be able to pair that maybe with some, some social factors of, of how the students are doing outside of the classroom and testing and what might contribute to those scores fluctuating up and down. Um, again, having the individual student login information for results, access codes, um, can be used in classes. Um, we can communicate more with parents about utilizing those, those free testing resources for those students. Um, if you don't know much about Khan Academy, it's a free online test service. They also have free things that are not test services for classes. You could, if you wanted to get on there today and start learning about French art, you could do that. They have, they have all kinds of free education, which is awesome. Um, they will individualize the test prep for students based on their scores. So it's not like everybody logs in and everybody starts at the same place. When students put their access codes in, Khan Academy individualizes it per student to work on the skills that they need to improve on. Mr. Alt is, like I said, Mr. Dana, he loves it, he is so excited about collecting the data for this. Um, I feel like it's our first real plan, school-wide community, to collect data, to evaluate it, be able to utilize that data to help our community decide on curriculum decisions, um, help teachers decide how they want to approach it more in their classes with their students and what they want to work on. Um, and just, I have a better understanding how students are achieving through the high school career. So I'm super excited about this, um, we'll see how it goes, first time around, we're getting the testing set up. SAT will definitely be its own day for the juniors because that's our big accountable test. So we're still deciding if we're gonna do the eight-nine test one day, the ten the next day, or if we can combine those two days and, and knock out just one day without disrupting the, the whole educational process at school. So we're working on a few details. Um, the ten test is actually going to, we can do that at no cost. We do have to pay a small fee for the eight-nine test, but for the long run and what we can get from it, we feel like that's a, you know, a small price to pay for what we want to get out of this. So more to come on that. That's all I got? Thank you.
A lot of good stuff going on.
Lots of good stuff.
Any questions or comments for?
I do have a, a few of them.
You can go first.
Okay, um, I was wondering if Ms., uh, either Ms. Miller or the administration can put something in about the WISE. At least, uh, a free thing would be either an article to the TRIB or, uh, maybe a recap in, in the parent, uh, thing to let, let our stakeholders know how, how good our, our people are doing. Um, and along with that, the FCHS performance, uh, that you spoke of. Um, and I thought it would be particularly, um, interesting to people to see the, the caliber of schools that we're ranking against in there.
I agree. Mrs. Miller and I actually just talked about this today, so yes, there will be something
Wonderful.
Coming, I love that idea as well.
Um, having paid for an ACT prep course, it's, it's actually about double that at, at least the one at Sylvan Learning Center. Uh, with the two hundred dollar deduction, uh, on a special, it goes for six hundred. Uh, so it's normally eight hundred dollars for these, uh, these kids to go to that. So anything you can do, uh, to increase their test prep, I think is money will. Adam came home today and said he took last year's English, uh, portion in his English class, uh, the English SAT portion from last year, and I, I think it's a wonderful thing. It's well-spent for, uh, for the, the kids to do any of that. And the Khan Academy is a great, a great way to go. Um, yeah, and then just administratively, um, I don't know how everybody else feels, but if, if it's in here, I, I don't need paper copies of it, um, and anything we can do to reduce the cost on, on
That one's not in there this time, that's why.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Ray, did you have one?
Yeah, one, one comment, I'm looking at a lot of these names, and I visit a lot of these schools, not for athletic purposes, but following some volleyball teams around, and these things just trip with resources. I mean, there's some of the nicest, I'm sure there's nice campuses all over the country, but we drop onto these campuses inside and out. These places are really something, and they've got so much money to do a lot of these things, and we, you know, I think that's just all very impressive.
All right, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
All right, I, I wanted to piggyback a little bit, um, on what Ms. Jung was talking about. And, um, and I'm not sure if you understand how excited Ms. Jung is about this new test prepping, but, uh, she's been, uh, been pretty excited about it. And, uh, I don't, I don't wanna slight Mrs. Kozinski because she's been Miss Data for so many years, so I don't want her to lose any part of that title. Um, we also, so the AccuPlacer is the test that our seniors take at SWIC to, to try to, um, get into accredited classes. And so we just had our, um, seniors that wanted to go to SWIC go take this. And I've got a little bit of statistics, and so this, again, is kind of a pat on the back for both our English and our math, those are the two areas that are, that are tested. Last year we had forty-five to test and this year we only had forty-three. Um, last year the average reading score was sixty-eight, this year it's seventy-eight, so we increased by ten percent. Um, the average reading was seventy-five, this year it's eighty-seven, so we increased by twelve. So this is, Edar teaches the English class and she incorporates test prep throughout the year. And so that is something that she has changed inter-curricular to incorporate to try to get these kids a little bit prepared. So the number of kids that qualified for a credited English class, last year was twenty-four, this year was thirty, even though we had smaller numbers. In math, um, our number per placement, I did not have the average score from last year, but this year was average of sixty-five on, high of a hundred on the score. Uh, the college placement, we only had ten that placed for college credit last year, and this year it's fourteen. And again, the math department has incorporated some test prep things in their curriculum, so, um, you know, both of those departments, the science, uh, I, I don't know if you read that other one, we just finished second in the county, okay? So we just, we just knocked science out of the park. And so, um, all, all three of those guys, all three of those departments are, are really putting in extra work and, and trying to incorporate that test prep for their, uh, classes. So that's, that's, just wanted to give them a quick little kudos. I didn't know about that, but I wanted to say that real quick. Uh, first thing I have is, uh, we met with Dr. Rosberg today. Um, Dr. Osborne could not make it out of family emergency, but got a little bit of a, uh, preview of what the report is probably gonna say, or some of the stuff the report's gonna say. So Dr. Rosberg worked with the curriculum, so his portion of the report is pretty much done. So what he is, uh, kind of, uh, giving us, and again, I don't have anything written, it's all just verbal. Uh, he was very impressed with SCHS's curriculum, um, offerings, especially with our, what we offer in vocational, uh, the fine arts, the dual credit, um, just was very impressed because the size of school we have, uh, we are just very well-rounded compared to a lot of schools, um, that are our size. Um, and so that's, that's very nice to, um, to hear. Um, our co-curricular, uh, there are, again, schools our size, we offer more sports than those schools. You would have to go to a Mascuda, a Waterloo to get that size of school. But the offerings that we don't have are wrestling, tennis, and boys volleyball that he thinks we probably could offer. Um, the issue is, he doesn't think that a school our size could support adding another one of those sports because of what it would take away from, um, the sports that we currently have. Um, curriculum-wise, uh, and I think I've said this in the past, and I, if I haven't, I've thought it a lot. Um, reorganization, consolidation makes a lot of sense when you talk about curriculum, because then it makes it a lot easier to align curriculum from, uh, top to bottom, bottom to top. So one of the things that you had talked to the group, and we had all, all four districts, uh, St. LaBoree, Freeburg Grade School, uh, Smithon and Freeburg High School at the meeting, was that kind of asked us, you know, are we gonna try to put a little more effort in, uh, to try to, uh, collaborate with the other districts to, um, look at curriculum? And we've done that a little bit here and there, we haven't done it as much, so we all said yes, we would like to try to do that a little bit more. Um, so, so we're gonna try to do that over the next, uh, you know, year, um, but that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the consolidation. The, and I'll talk about this a bit more in the next, uh, item. The state is, has delayed their payments to schools and, and their financial outlook until almost April. So the idea that they're gonna be able to talk to us in March is probably not gonna happen. So if, if we don't get that financial information until April, we're looking at May or even June before we get the final report. So we just wanted to say, you know, they're still working on the numbers, but until the state sends us, uh, that information or, and they can get it from the state, it's gonna be kind of hard to work out. So the idea is they want to, um, have a thorough study and be able to give us a recommendation. Um, but it may take a little, little bit of time, a little more time than we were hoping. So, um, again, um, he feels like he has all the information for his part. Uh, Dr. Osborne's doing the, uh, financial portion and, and his, he's just delayed now just on what each district's gonna get, uh, from the state, but we won't know that till April. That being said, legislative update, um, so this little veto that the governor, um, completed back in December maybe, was overridden by both houses. Um, and it was, uh, again, I believe it was a political move, uh, it did not really hamper the evidence-based funding model at all. Uh, but in this, they found a technical glitch in the, the funding model, so now they have to go back and pass some more legislation to fix the glitch. So, um, I don't know if that's why we're delayed until April, but, uh, the funding was due in December. Uh, it's been delayed till April, so again, we're just waiting on that. The governor did have the State of the Union earlier this week. Um, he has concentrated on pension shift costs to the school districts. Um, he is suggesting that there is, uh, the pension shift cost has moved to the school within a four-year period. Um, they're predicting that that would cost four hundred and ninety million in the first year. Uh, he approved three hundred and fifty million for extra funding. So if you do your math, that's about a net loss of about a hundred and forty million dollars in funding. He says that there's going to be, um, tools for districts to help pay for that. So if you can read to the lines, that means our taxpayers are probably going to bear the burden of that. So, uh, I'm not sure how that's gonna work out. I don't know what the two houses are gonna do, I would assume the, uh, associations are gonna fight that, but, uh, that'll be interesting to see how that works out. Um, prom two thousand and nineteen, so that is not this coming prom, but the prom is next spring. Uh, we've actually are gonna change the venue of prom. Uh, years ago, we had it at the Scottish Rite, we decided to move it closer to a venue in town, so we went to Turner Hall. We outgrew Turner Hall, so then we moved it to the Legion in St. LaBoree and, uh, have actually kind of outgrown the Legion. Um, and so they, they looked at several different places and they picked the Regency Conference Center in Shiloh. That's the one where you just cross the interstate, uh, on the left there. And, um, they had to put down, they came and talked to Jill and I, and they had to put down a three thousand, a thousand dollar deposit to hold that date, and we went ahead and gave them the okay. This would include both dinner and the prom. They're estimating with fundraisers, and that was part of the penny, um, rodeo.
Penny wars.
Penny wars, sorry. And, uh, uh, but that is part of the fundraising effort. They're hoping the tickets will be about forty dollars, that's for dinner and the prom, where this year there was about twenty-five dollars. Um, the student council discussed this amongst the kids, they went out, they talked to some of their friends, had very positive feedback. So we're gonna, we're gonna try that for a year and see how it works. Um, I, I think it'll be pretty nice, it sounds like they'll decorate it and it, it'll, it'll be very nice, so. Uh, and the last thing I have on here is the Southwest Division Dinner. Uh, if you are, uh, know where you're gonna go on May twenty-ninth, I think Jane has got in your, uh, packets, uh, the invitation, and I think she wants it by, uh, March twenty-third, did I say June? May, March twenty-ninth, I'm sorry. Really? Twenty-ninth, am I right? So, uh, it's at some time in March, and she would also like that, um, RSVP, what Dave was at, twenty-third? Yeah. It's in your packet. March twenty-third, there you go. So, uh, that's always a nice dinner, I believe it's in, I'm gonna get it wrong, I call it Highland.
It is a Highland.
And, uh, so if you're interested, uh, we'll provide transportation and, uh, pay for it and get you there.
How far is Highland?
Oh, it's a good forty minutes, at least. Yeah. And it's not a really good way.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Where's prom this year?
At, um, Legion, in St. LaBoree.
They don't, they don't serve a meal this time?
Correct. We have never, as far as I know, we have never served a meal at prom. So we have students that are going everywhere.
You know, that, uh, I'm a Legion member there. Uh, with your argument that we could possibly outgrow that building, uh, I, I find hard to, to believe because I've been at many a wedding with seven hundred people there. And, uh, why it's full, I don't think we get seven hundred people to our, uh, to our prom. Uh, if they would be interested in the meal, you can do it for about eight dollars a head. Uh, not granted it's gonna be a fried chicken or something like that, but it's, what I like about your proposal or their proposal is that it's this way, instead of they go to Fairview and eat in our St. Louis and now, now they gotta get to St. LaBoree. That's, so there'll be less driving, I think, I think that's favorable.
Okay, let's move on to old business.
Uh, the boiler, just a quick update, um, so the notice appeared in the paper last week for the pre-bid meeting that'll be held next week with the bid openings in early March, should be in plenty of time for, um, hopefully a board approval in, uh, March. And so I think we're around, it's good. All right, um, in your packets, there is a breakdown of the asbestos bids in this, this piece of paper here. And so this was done December nineteenth. And so, uh, uh, these are the bids that came in, uh, going through the bids. Uh, Centro of Madison, Illinois was the low bid at sixty-five-six. Uh, environmental consultants then goes through, speaks with, uh, the bidder, uh, makes sure they understand the scope of the project and, uh, kind of determines whether or not they feel like they can handle the project. They do feel that they can handle the project. So, um, I am, um, very comfortable with us and, and we needed approval from the state for help by safety, that approval has come through. So now we're ready to, uh, accept the bid from Centro for sixty-five-six, and again, that is for, um, the priority one and priority two. So all the work in the, in the gym, the secondary gym, and then in the classrooms and shops, there's some piping and things like that. So, uh, this will all take place at the beginning of the year. Uh, when I told the PE department, they were Uh, when I told the P E department, they were, that they were thankful, that we were taking care of it, and didn't have any issues at all. So, unfortunately, because of this project, they're gonna be displaced this summer for their very important, uh, camps. But, they were, they were very accommodating and understanding, so, uh, this'll hopefully take place as soon as we can right after school is done. In about two to three weeks, hopefully, to get the asbestos done.
Any questions on this?
No, I'd just like to say that it fits with the plan, and so, I think it's very important to get this work done this year, keep moving on the plan. Build the plan, do the work.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll move, we'll, we'll just a little break from Centro.
Second, we, uh, we open in a second, we, a roll call vote, Mr. Thomas, will you?
Aye.
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 Aye. Angie, you there? Okay, motion passes. Item C, Strategic Planning Committee.
Uh, this is just an update, uh, Angie and I had worked on the group, I believe it's somewhere in the, the twenty-five people range. Uh, twenty-six, something like that, so we've contacted a handful and have got verbal confirmations. Jane has sent out invitations to everybody, and so I think we'll have a good showing on the tenth. It's gonna be, uh, somewhere between nine o'clock, well, we have it scheduled from nine AM to four PM. There'll be a little continental breakfast and we'll provide lunch. One thing I wanted to add that we'll put in here is, uh, one of the things we need to think about is the village just gave the go-ahead for a ninety-home subdivision off the Wolf Road. I have projected by the year two thousand twenty-two that we're gonna have about seven hundred kids. So, if you add whatever we're gonna get from new subdivision, I think we're looking at, uh, we could look at another seven hundred fifty enrollment figure within the next, I don't know, five to ten years. So, that is something that I think would really needs to be talked about at this planning committee, and what do we, how do we handle that population? We, we have handled two, uh, seven hundred fifty in this building before, very tight, had a lot of floaters, teachers on carts that went from class to class. So, uh, it'll be a good conversation, so it's just an update.
Questions, comments?
I just wanna say.
Oh, Angie, go ahead.
I just wanna say, Greg's been very generous, he's, he's been working a lot, he's done a lot of work on this, and we're, we do it.
Wonderful. Okay, item D.
Okay, uh, we had, uh, the bids, um, sent in from, uh, for the paging bell clock and the phone system replacement. So, so, um, I sent this out to you guys in an email, so hopefully it's in your packet. I thought we did all right, we had three bidders for each project, and the first one is the paging and clock project. And, uh, so if you, if you look at the bids, um, this is something that we think we should purchase. Uh, because the, the paging and clock system is something that once we install it, it'll probably be here fifteen or twenty years. Um, with a little bit of maintenance or, or a little bit of tweaking here and there, there shouldn't be a lot of maintenance. So, uh, leasing it does not seem like a viable option, but purchasing it does. So, when we look at the, the prices that came in, they range from anywhere from about seventy-four thousand to ninety-nine thousand. We are actually, well, we looked at Barcom, uh, when we started talking to, um, their recommendations or their references, um, got some not-so-confident replies back from people. And then, reviewing their bid, they've never worked with the system that we wanna put in. So, uh, we're, we're concerned about having them come in and put a system they've never worked with. So, then we started talking to CTS, CTS, there's CTS Sparta, there's actually two CTSs. And they, they are the company that we actually, we use now for our phones. Uh, Jeff and I, or Jeff has done most of the legwork on this, um, vetting all of the, the contract and talking to the contractors. And, even though CTS is a higher bid, we feel like that is a better, uh, purchase for us because of the service that we know we're gonna get. In addition, they handle this product, the product that we're looking at is a, what is it, a Valcom? Look at that, I forgot to write, Valcom Classroom Connect Paging System. It, it is a paging system that's designed for schools. And, uh, we will be adding, uh, additional, uh, clocks, we'll be adding additional speakers. The, the, the school will be completely covered for paging, which if you've been watching the news lately, that scares me that we would be, you know, put out some kind of page and somebody in our school isn't getting that, I feel bad if that's been the case. But, um, I, I think, uh, our best bet is to award the contract to CTS, I don't know if anybody had any questions about that?
The only I say about, um, you don't wanna be decanting on a system. That's just not a good place to be, we always, used to say in business, you don't wanna be zero number one, you just don't. And I would, I would be in favor of the CTS for that, I would wanna be their first customer, if that, if that work comes up. And based on what you've talked about today, what we talked about before the meeting, about all the things that are going on out there, we need to get this one done.
This, this is a, um, this project would be done mostly in the evening, so they would send a, a crew in and, and they have to run wiring. So, they would send a crew in to wire, we did that when we did the cameras, and so that's pretty common. Uh, they, they all have to go through background checks, anybody comes to school, it's a background check. But they would work in the evening to run wire, hang the clocks, we're gonna put clocks in the hallway. They'll hang down so you can see the clock as you're walking through the hallway. And then, digital clocks in classroom, all the clocks be synchronized, we won't have to love the atomic clocks. So, it'll, it'll be, uh, it'll bring us up to the twentieth century.
You, you said this would last ten, fifteen, twenty years, say we have a boom, like positive, and we have to add onto the building, can you add on to the system?
Sure, yeah.
Heat in that phase, right?
Part means a heat in that phase, that.
Heat in that water.
Cat six. I, I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about. Uh, they think between a week and two, to, from the time they start to the time they finish. Yeah, probably ten to fourteen days, working days, kind of what they're thinking, you know, if they don't run anything. I haven't been told that we have a giant glob of wire in the, above the teacher's work area. When the old system died, they just rolled it up and put it up there, so, they know about it.
That's a big, exciting opportunity.
There you go.
If, if that's covered, you, you, even, even if it's still in the stadium, you can, uh, you can, like, buy a dollar, you know?
I'll put my best name on it.
Yeah. Okay, we need a recommendation?
I'll make a motion when we move forward with CTS, accept the bid as awarded.
Motion, second. Everyone, Mr. Haas, a roll call, Mr. Madrell, start with you.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, next item.
All right, uh, this is the second part of this item, and that's a phone, phone, phone and voice, I get numbers right. Phone and voicemail project, so, this project would basically replace our phones. And our phones are probably ten to twelve years old, at least I would guess. Uh, we currently have a digital system, and we had this bid out. We asked them to bid either a digital hybrid or a complete IP system. And, uh, so, the, the system that we are looking at is more of a hybrid. And so, we would put digital phones in the classrooms and, uh, probably the IP phones in the office area. One of the advantage of the IP phones is you would be able to link your cellphone, and so you would be able to call, uh, from your cellphone. You get your messages, you would also be able to call, you have the extension if you transfer it directly to your cellphone. So, for the administrators, probably the A D, when they're out and about, then you can easily get ahold of them. The teachers don't really need that, probably don't want that. But, um, the, um, the other thing that this system will do, then it will convert all their messages to, uh, emails. So, instead of the teachers having to go to their phones and get the messages, they can go and it's all written in text on emails. So, then, once we started looking at this, again, we gave them the option of either purchasing this or leasing it. You can see the purchase prices on the left, um, from thirty thousand to thirty-six, so they're, they're fairly competitive. But this is a, um, a higher maintenance issue. Um, we, we looked at a five-year lease, the five-year lease will, would include maintenance for the five years. And when you look at the five-year lease and the lease prices, um, the low bid changes, but, what you have to look at is CTS, um, on the right is actually a little bit higher than Tech Electronics, but Tech Electronics' bid was all digital phones. It did not include the IP phones, so they came in with that package, the, the little bid. The other nice thing about CTS is they have a holdback where they bank, uh, a certain amount of money each year. So, over the five-year, I think it's about twenty-eight thousand dollars that they could bank. Uh, since we're going with the paging system with them, if we would go with the phone system, we could use that bank money to upgrade either the phones or the clocks. Uh, or, we could apply that bank money to, uh, the next phone purchase when we have, when we need to do that. Um, so, we, it, it's kind of a, a rent-to-own, we can keep this longer than five years, like we did with these phones, and we can either pay a maintenance, monthly maintenance fee, once we, um, spend five years, or we could not pay the fee and just hope not to break. So, um, I, we, Jeff and I, again, Jeff's done most of the work on this, really feel like the, uh, lease option with CTS, uh, Sparta is the best option for us to go. Tech Electronics' bid just not, did not meet the specs that we really were looking for when we asked for it.
You told me that this, uh, lease option included the monthly?
It, maintenance, so it covers, it covers all the main, right, it covers all the maintenance. The only thing it doesn't cover is we wanna move a phone. If we say, you know what, I don't want that phone here, I want it there, then they're gonna charge us for running the cable. But if, if the handset goes out, they'll come in and bring a new handset. If something goes wrong with the computer program, we'll, they'll, they'll take care of that, and they'll diagnose the issues. We currently have CTS for our phones, and, and we've worked with them for I don't know how long, they, we're very satisfied with what they do. And so, we, we're very familiar with them.
You said it was gonna go, it was gonna go up to two fifty, you said, so it's sixty months, that would be fifteen thousand dollars of maintenance if we were just paying the, as far as to figure out this purchase price and...
Right, so you have to add the maintenance. So, that's why you wanna look at the difference between the maintenance and the first, I'm sorry, the lease and purchase prices, because this cover, right, this covers all the maintenance. And then, the other nice thing about the lease is we can pay this out of the lease levy. So, this will not come out of one of those three funds that we had talked about earlier. So, we have enough in our lease levy that will cover this, and we, we, so that's, it's kind of, uh, it's not free money. Uh, it's money that goes to, uh, you know, kind of banks in that lease levy, but this way we can pay for it out of that account, not have to pay down buildings and grounds, all working cash.
Angie, two more questions.
Um, any questions?
I, I have a few questions on, it's brand-new equipment, what kind of maintenance can we expect with, and what kind of warranty does it come with immediately?
It's a, it's a five-year warranty on, on the, you know, they cover.
Not paying for anything extra?
Right.
We, say we buy it, how long of a warranty on the equipment is, we buy, I mean, is, is it ninety days, is it a year, or is it?
Typically, a year.
Okay.
Year warranty.
What expectation, if they put in a system that there's, and they do it right, that there should be any maintenance on that system at all? Or if it's not right, I would think that they have a callback that, hey, this isn't right. Because, that's, it's the only problem that I, I saw when I looked at these numbers, is the cost of leasing this is over double of what purchasing it is for five years. It's a very short period of time for upgraded, for upgrades, new technology, five years isn't... We're not gonna upgrade anything in five years. It, it's, it's a short enough span that for half the cost, it just seems like we should buy this. I understand, I understand the refresh program, that they're gonna bank and they're gonna let us buy something later with some of the money that we've given them upfront, it still ends up costing twelve K more, even, even after that. Uh, I, I'm having a hard time accepting that not, just buying this for half the price isn't a, isn't a better option for a five-year period of time. If they do the job right, there shouldn't be maintenance issues. It does come with a warranty, if it covers at least a year, we're only looking at a four-year period.
Four-year period, two fifty comes up to twelve thousand. How much are, are you having?
Well, that's if you're paying for the, the maintenance, uh, program.
I'm just, yeah, I'm saying after.
Sorry, don't get me wrong.
I was just saying, I, I just wanted to know, like, how much we're needing it now.
We, we probably call them out once every four to six weeks or something.
Okay, we're using a, a, a ten-to-twelve-year-old system.
And, and that's, and again, as that ages, that is probably typical. And with the phone and, and, and that kind of things, we, we absolutely could upgrade within five years. So, the, so, so the technology could change where we could upgrade, whether it's different types of headsets or things like that.
Kind of general to software itself.
When I looked at the numbers too, I thought the same thing you did.
We talked about the brand-new equipment, I mean, if you buy something for your home, you're, you're going to use it for five years. And then, if there's new technology, you're gonna get new technology at the end of five years for half the cost, I, I just can't see it.
But the only thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I put in a camera system out there, brand-new system, real good reputable company, and said, no, we don't, same thing, thinking, paying five thousand dollars camera, seventy-five hundred dollars camera, I'm not gonna spend this extra. And after six months, one camera went bad, and we're out of the warranty, and it was fifteen hundred dollars just for the service call. And all of a sudden, you start figuring out, boy, if I would've paid that two fifty a month, it doesn't take long. I, I don't know, I just would've, cause I thought the same thing you did, until I started looking at the numbers and figuring out, I do think we would still need to do this monthly, I'm sure that first year probably never have a problem.
Sure.
But, when you're dealing with this type of technology, just a little thing, it could cause a huge problem. Then they come in and they spend hours upon hours at seventy-five hundred, twenty-five dollars an hour, I don't know what that technician costs you.
Two fifty, two fifty a month, you're looking at three times five is fifteen, uh, a year, um, or fifteen K, but if you're under warranty for a year, it's twelve, it's twelve K. I would be interested in knowing our maintenance costs on our current system, which is ten to twelve years old. If they come out every five to, uh, six weeks or however long, we should be able to say in, in the past year, how much have we paid them to see.
About two-hundred-and-twenty-something dollars a month is what we're paying them for maintenance.
Okay, so we are currently under a...
We're currently under a contract with that, yes.
So, we don't know what just a service call costs?
Uh, no, uh, unless, again, unless it's, we're moving a, moving a phone or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, because if six service calls are only two grand, or, you know, if it's four hundred dollars a service call, uh, we have to know those numbers before we enter a maintenance program that is two fifty a month automatic that, that we may not use. You know, I don't know, uh, it, between the two numbers, when I looked at it, I, in five years for technology, yes, things are changing, but, uh, I think the system that we get would be good enough to last us for five years for half the cost without having to reinvest some bank money. It, it made more sense to me, at least looking at the numbers, to, to buy.
Is there any data out there from other systems about service call, how much that costs? I mean, you know, people decide this all the time, you buy a new car, and you can, you can buy that, that package, some people do, some people don't. Is there any data we could look at about how well the system works in other schools? And have they had a lot of maintenance issues for, or is it?
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we can, I haven't, we haven't looked into other schools that, uh, and talked to the other schools except for when we talked to these, and they were all happy with what they had.
We were talking about more than cables and stuff, too, we were talking about all the hardware, all of those IP phones.
It's, it's all brand-new, hardware and software, we have to reinstall.
And, and I, and I realize that, um, I'm talking about from a maintenance standpoint, you're gonna have to...
Well, we're not, we're not buying a fifty-five-inch TV in the last ten years without having touched it, we're buying something that teachers pick up, that everybody picks up, and kids pick up, and it's something that we really, and it's not a system that we really need to not have work. And so when it does go down, we need it to work. And so the maintenance portion is, to me, vital, that we have this maintained, and have the professional company maintain it. And so if you... If you... It'll, yes, it'll cover that, yeah. Right, and that would probably come through our insurance, if it was a lightning strike.
It also, it also gives a synergy between the paging system and all that. You got the same company that worked on it.
I like, I like the company, I like everything, I just like buying it instead of leasing it for double the price.
But, but I would not recommend us purchasing it outright without also agreeing to maintenance. And so if you do that, you're, you're, you're getting the same price, pretty close to the same price. Because, because the cost is really forty-two thousand dollars. If you look at their lease price over five years, that's sixty bucks. So the purchase price is thirty, the lease price after that holdback money is forty-two. So when you, when you consider the maintenance on the purchase price, it puts it right in line with the lease price.
Provided you, you buy future equipment, you use it.
But we can take that money in five years, six years, seven years, and we can, we can put that towards a new system if we would like, from them, of course.
Yes.
So that also gives us that option, so if we don't have any maintenance issues, if you take the, I think it's twenty-eight thousand, whatever it is, if you take that amount of money, or twenty-three, and you put that towards a, the purchase, then you've just cut that cost of the new system down, I don't know, sixty, seventy percent or more?
If you go with your, your lease option that's here, there would not be a maintenance...
Maintenance, that's it, that's it.
That's included in that. Okay, so if you, if you're going to pay that anyway, then really, this thousand eighty-six would be reduced by two fifty for the cost of the leased equipment. The thirty thousand purchase price is going to, it comes, it comes to six thousand a year, or five hundred a month. So if you're, you're going to lease, and our cost, are you following my math?
No.
Okay, the purchase price is thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
Divided by, by sixty months, five years, is five hundred dollars cost a month. Spread out, amortized over five years. We said we're going to buy the, the maintenance program anyway, at two fifty.
Right.
So that's seven...
We're, we're paying two-twenty, the comparable price for a new system is, is two fifty.
Okay.
Three, it's three sixty, three eighty, for the same service that you would get under the lease program. A, I can't remember the name of the, uh...
Sure.
The Tom Cunson, so you're going to have, you're going to have to use that dollar value.
Okay, so three hundred, now you're up to, you're up to eight hundred dollars almost a month, that comparable cost, is that right then?
Almost nine, eight sixty-three, if you say a three sixty-three, you would have...
Now that you've, you've let me in on those figures, that ten eighty-six doesn't look too unattractive.
Right.
Being, knowing that we get twenty-eight grand back at the end of it, I'll go along with you.
All right, Dean, do you have any comments on this one?
I, I agree with Mr. Gray, with what he wants to do.
Mr. Aaron's opinion.
Do you have any other comments, Mr. Aaron?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to move to accept the bid for CTS Sparta, to enter into a five-year lease for a phone system as presented. Everyone will stop. We'll start off with Mr. Yow.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Angie?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next item.
Okay, the next item is a, a look at our parking situation. So we looked at two different locations, and I'm going to picture in your board packet of just the one we're proposing. But we looked at both the large grassy lot, and we looked at the area east of the school, between the school and Bell Street, as two possible solutions of the parking. And we also just got estimates, these are not bids, these are just estimates, we'd have to bid this out. But trap rock is the rock that they use on the rope, and so that's the rock that doesn't have the dust, they oil it, turns black, and is dustless. And then we also got a price on asphalt. So when they gave me the bid numbers back, I was actually kind of shocked at how inexpensive the asphalt seems to be. And we also looked at tree removal, and this was, Dennis Dean came out, and, again, I was shocked. They said they would only charge us about forty-three hundred dollars to take down the five or six trees here. They would take the stumps, they would cut the trees down, they would cut it up, take away all the debris, all the small branches, but they would leave the bigger logs, because Dennis Toma thinks that he can get rid of all that, he can have people that can come, take it, use it. And then up here in front, they're about fourteen hundred dollars, there's three trees there, and... So the student parking lot ranges from anywhere from about sixty-four thousand to seventy-three thousand dollars, we're estimating about seventy new parking spots there. If we were put in, and I would recommend this only be a staff parking lot, we can get about forty new parking spots there, and it's ranging anywhere from about thirty-nine thousand to forty-five, forty-six thousand. The idea, and the picture that I have, I was, that quick I'd have put it up on the screen. But the gravel lot that we have right now holds thirty-three staff parking spots. In addition to kind of that extended circle, there's visitor spots, and then there's staff spots. We can move almost all the staff out of the parking lots, and move them into a forty-two-block parking lot. And then we would gain probably at least thirty-three, possibly forty, new student parking spots. I talked with the staff, or at least spoke with Julie, that parking area in the front seems very appealing for the staff. Most of our classes are from near south, so it'd be very nice for them to be able to just go directly in. It would be separated from the students, the students would add new parking, and then we could actually add a few more visitor spots. Looking at budget-wise, I put this, I didn't give this to you yet, I did an update, this is that five-year. One there? It's, this is updated. Yeah, I didn't put everything in. So we could do the work on one of these, and then make payments in fiscal year nineteen, so we could take, take the money out of the fiscal year nineteen budget, instead of taking it out of this year's budget. I think the best route to go, if we want to add parking, and we are going to need parking, especially if we're, I think next year we're adding about thirty kids, if the numbers are accurate, and they're pretty accurate, we're going to need more parking. We could add that parking, if you see down here in that second block, it says parking lot, that's a faculty. I estimated at high at about fifty thousand. I didn't include striping, striping wasn't included in the numbers that he gave me, but I couldn't imagine striping, the parking lot's not going to run anymore, about two or three thousand dollars, I would think.
I don't know, actually, what about the concrete blocks?
Yeah, yeah, all the stops, yeah, they would all be included. And there's already the driveways from the old houses there, so it looks like they would probably set it up, is probably a one-way, where you come in one, go out the other, but you could park them front to back. There's enough parking there, and there is a natural swale that runs through there, he could fit that in without affecting that swale. So the water runoff would not be affected. He would put in a asphalt ramp between the parking lot and the concrete area that goes right behind the kitchen. So it'd basically right down here, so the faculty could walk straight in, south-enders, you guys, they could splatter there, they could actually walk directly to the south end. And then I would think that we are probably, you know, eventually going to look at more parking, and then look at the next year, the final year, to put parking in that green area. I don't know what kind of questions we have.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Did, did your asphalt guy that gave the estimate mention that the first year would be rock or anything, to put out a base first, let it settle, and then come in and asphalt? And I only know that the seniors, the home, did that before they put down, and it makes sense that you, you did a good base before you would put asphalt. That would be just one concern I have, regardless of which site that we took. The price per space is almost identical between, the thing, it costs so much to do asphalt, so much to do rock, it turns out to be a thousand forty-four for seventy student spaces over here, per space, and a thousand ninety over, for the faculty lot, for the forty-two-space faculty lot that frees up thirty-three student spots. My argument for doing this grass lot first is aesthetics. The main entrance of this school, and the number-one eyesore associated with this school, is that parking lot. And part of it is that grass area that is, is just like a band-aid, it's unused area there, it's the main entrance. This area over here by the greenhouse has a finished look right now, it's not unattractive right now. We've spoke, that's number one. Number two, we've spoken about future growth, by your own estimates, you're saying seven hundred students shortly, with the new subdivision, seven fifty within five or ten years, it seems to me that we should maximize student parking now. And the larger lot would do that. I walked around, how many, how many certified employees do we have?
Certified?
Certified.
About forty-eight or so.
Forty-eight, and how many non-certified?
Uh, we're probably sixty, sixty-five total, that probably park.
Combined?
Right, you talk custodial, kitchen staff.
Right. But not here at the same time, like, the night staff, for instance, is...
That's four people.
Okay, okay, so sixty...
Sixty-five, might be sixty.
I walked around and easily found fifty spots, including thirteen right back behind, not counting any, any of the visitor spots that are designated now. On the road, there's fifty spots on, on our road, right in here, including not counting the two spots for our driver's education. There's fifty spots available before we ever get into the faculty area of, of the parking lot. That's also not including maybe six or eight spots across the street in the first row of your auxiliary lot. I think a redistribution of the spots that we have available could, could free up some student spots, I've had that conversation with you before. It, it just seems to me, from an aesthetic, or bang for the buck in future growth, that it makes, it makes a lot more sense to do in front of our school rather than a new faculty.
I think we're in equal.
And I, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. But right now, we have, we have students parking around the four-way, the city park, and up in the church parking lot, because we don't have enough. And if we can free up seventy, or if we can free up thirty-three, I think we should free up seven.
So we have, when I spoke with Andrew, first off, every spot is sold, so we don't, there are no free spots. They may be open, but they're sold, so we don't have any more to give to anybody from the square park. The, the second thing, we, we probably have about twelve to fifteen students that have come and asked for parking since we've sold out. So to me, we're going to take thirty-three new parking spots for students, add a few more on the circle, we're going to easily cover that for the next year or so, which I think will cover our increase. And then the year after, we can go and put that other big parking lot. For me, the other thing is the, the cost, if you're looking at, you know, fifty thousand dollar cost compared to probably seventy, somewhere between seventy-five and eighty...
It's forty percent more, yeah.
And so that's a factor. And so if I can wait and try to build up some money in some of those funds, I would rather do that, we can't do self-life safety, this is not eligible for that. In addition to, if, if, if the state is going to short schools a hundred and forty million dollars, we're going to take a hit, and I don't know how that's going to affect us. So I really would not want to commit more money than I think we need to right now. And so that's really the reason why I think we ought to go this direction first, and then that direction is financially, and I think it'll, it'll open up enough parking for the next couple of years, until, it'll only be two if we do it like it's written in the plan. So it'll just be the next, instead of this summer, it'll be next summer we put that parking lot in.
I would also say that we kind of want to designate it right now, for, and probably just semi, things like that, that I would want to hold off before setting the larger housing. When everyone else is going out, that stuff, you want to commit to a larger parking lot, and so we, we will build these, and kids, and things like that.
Okay. I got one more thought, so I'm kind of where Angie's at, and what I was going to suggest is maybe go to the bid process, get that part of it done, because we've also got an HVAC system coming through next month, and we don't know if it's going to hit the numbers, if it's going to come in over. And we're still trying to juggle that, and that's a big one. And so I personally would be okay going forward with the bids, because we can always, it says it right in there, we can bid for, we can take them or not.
That one, or bid for both, or what are you suggesting, Mike?
I'm kind of where Greg's at, I mean, I think the money's going to get tight when we try to do a lot of the things we're trying to do to get the school back to where I think it needs to be.
Sure.
Not that I wouldn't like to go do that, and I'd like to get all that gravel off of there, but I think it's going to take time. And I think to buy us some time, if we could do the smaller one, if it's done right, I don't think it's going to be an eyesore, I hope it's not an eyesore if it's done right.
Oh, I'm certain it, it will be a nice parking lot. My argument was only, it's finished right now, and looks good. That is not, and doesn't, so they can go out there, they can, they can work out there, this still looks good. That, that's my argument. So you're going to have, you're going to have your nice parking lot over here, and you're still going to have an eyesore right in front of your school.
One, one other factor, and I really did talk about this, is when I, when I spoke with, and this was more asphalt, not millstone, and that's who kind of maintains our asphalt parking lot, is, he asked me about the guttering system on, I don't know why, I can't remember the name of the road, but the Circle Road. Thank you, Emily Street here. So there is no guttering, it is basically an open ditch. And ideally, what I would like is to take that guttering that we have along Monroe, and bring it back around Emily, and run it all the way to...
What, back in, not long ago?
Richland, thank you, no, I was looking for a street name. So run it all the way to Richland Street, and that's not included. So, so if we're going to put the parking lot in, to me, if that one, then you also finish the guttering system, the curving, possibly put a sidewalk in, if you're going to walk across that way, I know they go across the other, the village has already committed to put a sidewalk on Emily Street up there, Richland Street, across from the senior lot, so they are going to replace that. So I, there are some additional costs that I think we really ought to look at when we do that one, that I think would add to the cost, probably bring it up closer, I don't know, to ninety or a hundred.
When you speak with your, your asphalt guys, and one possibility, instead of everything being in two thousand nineteen, is that if it would be a better way to proceed, to, to put it out there, put a base, let it sit and settle, and then come back in asphalt, you have the opportunity to shred that out over two years, instead of just twenty nineteen.
We'd have to go to the township for that, though, the care center had to go to the township to give permission to do that.
The process, the process of asphalt...
Part of it wasn't necessarily just the settlement, part of it was the cost. Part of it wasn't necessarily just the settlement, part of it was the cost.
Yeah.
They, they couldn't afford to do everything all at one time, so they, they said, hey, can we do this one year and then do the rest?
I'll, I'll ask him.
But I mean, it makes sense to me that if the proper way to do a lot is to let it set the season.
I, I would be surprised if that's what they do.
No, I, I think they'll put the rock down, they'll roller it in, pack it in, and, I mean, a post new construction.
They're gonna press some tests.
There you go.
And they'll use the roller.
Yeah.
So now, the, the other part of this is, the recommendation is just to direct me to move forward. So one of the options that we could, that, you know, one of the things we could do is we could hold off until the March meeting and look at this after we get the HVAC bids. Because if the HVAC bids come in more, much more than we want, then we, then to me, that's priority over the parking lot. So it may not, you know, I can, we can bid this out, or I can just wait and get the numbers and then proceed with the bid. So this doesn't say I have to bid it out tomorrow, I can bid this out later in March, which I probably was pointing to anyway because I wanna see what the bids are gonna come in.
That makes sense to me. I, I would ask that you, that you, you bid both. You never know, you would, you, you might be surprised.
Angie, what?
Right now, I'm watching.
Nope, we got you.
Nope, that sounds like a great idea.
Dean, you have any thoughts on this?
I, I think it was better here first. I, I don't think that's quite the eyesore under Dennis' things, but I, somewhere along the line, yeah, we're gonna need to do something out there. But I, I think taking, I guess, the baby step approach here, I think would be.
Think it'll get what we need for, for this few years. Any other?
The only other thing I would say is, based on what you're saying about the base and everything, the other thing, he's gonna talk to the company anyway, the best way to do it is to do that. And everybody believes that's an eyesore. We can work into our numbers, this is a lot of what it is, right? We can work into our numbers. We could take a section equal to that, take the rock from this side, move to that side, and asphalt this side. And then next year, if it takes a year, and you get it compressed correctly, then you could do the other side, just kinda work across.
Well, as, as a minimum, I mean, is, the numbers are, are going towards the setup. As, if you're only going to go out for a bid, well, then I would ask that you have the companies that bid, bid both. Bid both. Their equipment's gonna be here, it makes sense to me, a larger area would cost less.
Dennis, don't you think, though, if we, if we added on to that parking lot over there to do that postage stamp and just asphalt and then have the rest of that chipped, that's not gonna look worse?
Oh, terrible.
You know, and we wouldn't need to just asphalt the whole thing at one time, which then the numbers didn't usually over like three hundred thousand or something at the time?
It, to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
It, it's close to three hundred and three hundred and fifty. I would be in favor of.
Do it all at one time?
I, I'd be in favor of chipping it and not asphalting it. Uh, if you're gonna do this one by itself, standalone, the, yeah, I realize that.
Yeah.
But we, we've oil, we've got an approval to oil and chip the existing. I say the argument could be made.
Well, we didn't, we just did that, yeah. Yeah, we just did that. That was before the city had their, that we had to follow the city's, and we're, for those years, that law passed.
But with the, with that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't asphalt that if we would go for this. I would try to, I would try to get a variance to, to oil and chip it, just like, just like the roads.
I think right now, my, my recommendation would be, you know, it looks like we could do this and do it by the city code, and it would be affordable if, you know, we bid it out, if we come within that fifty thousand, we do that right now. Cause we don't have that need for the seventy spaces right now. And to think we're gonna get everybody from around the park to park here, that's not gonna happen anyway cause there's other, there's other issues than just wanting to park a freeway. I know you're not sure what there are, anyhow. So I think this would really cover what we need for a few years, and next year or the year after, we can look at it much earlier and see what we can do with adding more as our enrollment expense.
Because I was saying that they're concerned about this compaction. I don't feel, you yourself, what they did when they put this four lane in out here. They just put that chemical in the dirt, they put the asphalt right over the dirt out there. They didn't put rock in at all, when they put that road in out there.
This is, this is like an eight or ten inch base, I think is how it's called.
So I, I think that should be just fine.
Uh, they put road fabric in and it isn't going anywhere either, right?
Okay.
I filled in a eight foot basement. We just did compression tests, had to fill in, put in a foot. Compressor testing, nice, really good.
Right, this parking lot here is gonna be like, is it gonna butt against the greenhouse and just come a little bit forward? Is that kinda just this again, what you're thinking about?
It'll actually, they're gonna leave a, for the sidewalk that comes directly into the cafeteria, they're gonna leave a, kind of a swath of grass to have a little separation between the asphalt and the sidewalk. And then there's gonna be a little bit of room left between where their landscaping area comes in, you call it the greenhouse.
We had, I'm just sitting here thinking, we had hours and hours and hours of discussion. We were talking about taking those trees down there, and it was a different board at that time. And I was looking for moments for trying this out in the street. But as I think about the practical aspect of it, you know, that's really, we're able to asphalt that out there, that's gonna be a parking lot. Every, every school has big home and parking lots. That will be our big home and parking lot.
And it is not the back of the school. It isn't really the front of the school.
Right, right.
And, and the asphalt, I think, will actually look nice if you drive into the grade school.
Over here through a rock. Yeah, right, and it's a good, yeah, and it's gonna be a little bit smaller, and you still have some green space. We've got a lot of green space in our, our field out, out here, but it's kinda nice, you know, to have that. It's interesting. We were, we were discussing.
We talked about this?
No, Andy put stuff up on the screen. We've discussed this over there many, many times.
Okay.
Probably before you, or you.
Oh, no.
Greg, if, if, if you're gonna go through with that, and if it's, you're not going to ask for bids for both sites and only that one, uh, I would ask that you take a look at the, the area between the existing spots along the back of our building and the drive that goes up to our kitchen. There's an area there, just the grass. The company, how much would it cost extra to take out? There's, there's room for three more faculty parking spots, just extending this area?
There's a curving telephone pole, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Just use the space if it wouldn't be that, and that wouldn't be asphalt, so that'd be an extension of.
There's a, there's a pole there.
I mean, underground, but I guess that may not.
There's a gas line. Yeah, and there's a, whatever you call that, fixed up, gas.
Okay, can we, I think we've talked about this one enough, can we, uh, get a motion?
Need a motion, just direct?
Just to the, maybe solicit a bid.
Legally, you don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion?
Solicit a bid. It's just more to have the conversation, as long as there's consensus, that that's what we're gonna do. Is, you know, within the next two or three weeks, or whatever it is, let's go ahead and solicit bids for the, the parking.
Well, I think we should direct you to solicit bids.
Again, it doesn't need the motion, I'll really, unless somebody says no, then we probably need to make a motion.
We'll get covered, you didn't, I'm sure you're gonna be covered.
Go ahead.
That was, that was a good side joke.
Yeah.
Okay, Greg, well, let's do it over.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
All right.
New business?
All right, so we passed out the calendar from last year, I'm sorry, for, in January, and had the first approval, so, our first viewing, so this is the final, the official approval. So the differences between the calendars is we are adding two early release days in March and April. And again, part of the conversation we had is, we actually bank an extra eighty-five minutes a day to cover our three hundred minute minimum by the state. And so that way, we can cover those and they actually count as full days as far as the state goes. And then the other two changes are half-days at the end of each semester. And so that last day before Christmas break, we can schedule it where we only have one exam. Where, where now we have three exams, people get out earlier. And the same thing in the spring, there was some changes made at the state that now we're allowed to have that as a half-day. They did change it to a full day, but now we've checked that we can have it as a half-day. So those are the changes that I'm asking, I'm sorry, those are the changes in the, in the calendar. And all the Freiberg, Smith, the Freiberg Grade School, Freiberg High School, and Smithin, all are using the same calendar.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? Need a motion? So do it.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed, none, motion passes, next item.
Um, in your packet, this is about the buses. And I sat down with Fritz and Bob Burns, our new mechanic, and looked at our fleet. We are a little heavy on the number of buses that we have. Because of the change in the leadership in the transportation, they're not exactly sure how the spring's gonna play out with the number of buses that we're willing to keep compared to what we have. But their estimation is we have at least one extra bus. There are two buses that we've identified that we think are, probably need to be replaced, and those are bus forty-six and fifty-six. So what we're looking at is replacing one of those buses with a new seventy-one passenger bus. I know I wrote seventy-seven, I think I'm thinking about our district, but in the write-up, but it is a seventy-one passenger bus. We bid, we, uh, budgeted a hundred thousand for the new bus. When we talked with one of the representatives, he thinks we could probably get a new bus for around seventy-five, which that's a very positive thing. Uh, the biggest change is we are looking at a gas bus as opposed to a diesel bus. Uh, speaking with Bob, who's, uh, came from Schmidt Trucking, who actually handled all, most of our repairs for our buses previously, the move is to gas buses. I put down some of the reasons why, cost of gas is much more in line with the cost of diesel. Uh, the buses are actually cheaper to purchase. Cold weather, cold weather starting is much easier with the gas bus than it is with the diesel. Uh, they would still probably get a, uh, engine heater, so they could plug it in if it gets really cold, but they prefer the gas over the diesel as far as the starting. Uh, reliability on the gas engines have improved quite a bit. This gas engine is, is very large, it's actually a ten-cylinder engine. So there's plenty of power to run the routes. Uh, and then the last thing is the maintenance. The maintenance is quite a bit cheaper. And again, I'm gonna probably mess this up, but there are specific maintenance things that happen with diesel buses, injectors, filters, and things like that, that once you start replacing those, it gets very costly. For the gas engine, it's, it's, it's very much the same as the gas engine in a car. Oil change, air filters are a lot cheaper, so the maintenance is a lot easier, a lot more inexpensive. There is a brochure from the company, talks about all the great benefits of gas. So they are asking for us to purchase a gas bus instead of a diesel bus, instead of a passenger. And we're hoping to get somewhere around the seventy-five thousand mark, but we will see. So I don't know what questions you guys have.
One question I got, stuck up to me is, why are you not wanting a V-eight engine?
The gas, uh, the company we're talking about, or talking to, that all they do is produce V-tens for the buses. They put the bigger engines out for the power. And what they found is that the V-eights didn't have enough power in their opinion.
Well, just looking at your minimum requirements here, you've got three hundred point horsepower for a V-ten. I personally own two vehicles that are six liter, six point twos, that have three hundred sixty-five and four hundred and twenty-five horsepower. So if you're wanting the V-ten for the horsepower, you can definitely get it to the V.
There's, so there's probably one, only one or two companies that even produce the gas in the buses anymore? And, and this is the engine they put in? I mean, I can check to see if there's a smaller engine.
Well, it's just that, I guess, that should be taken out of the, uh, on the year of specification.
Just the horsepower?
No. Then that a V-eight could be acceptable.
V-ten, we can do that.
I mean, I mean, basically, the V-ten, I, I'm not opposed to it, but like I says, if there ever comes, that somebody's gonna offer V-eights that's, that has the power and I would pass a V-eight, the eight's a, the eight's a, the eight's a less expensive engine.
I would guess, yeah.
Yeah, so I would at least get that out of there for, for future.
One thing I'd like you to ask, is, uh, do the buses, in, in our large tractor trailers, we're putting on a collision mitigation system, which is a sonar in the front that gives you the following distance of the vehicle in front of you. And if somebody cuts you off, it'll actually take off, take away the accelerator first. And if you don't adjust and put on the brakes, it will brake for you.
Right.
Cause I would think that with our buses and with our kids, that would be something that we would want. Maybe you don't have as much in the bus route, but whenever they're traveling long distances, just stay along for, for a game or something.
So collision mitigation?
Collision mitigation, yeah.
Okay.
And you say it in cars now.
They ask that, you know, that they're putting technology in the buses.
I don't know if they're doing it with buses yet. I haven't seen it, I haven't looked for it, though, but pictures here, they don't, they don't have it, it's a, it's a box in the front.
Well, you would think that they would have advertised for that, if that's what they have.
Yeah, it's, it's something that in the next five years will probably be standard in all cars and definitely large trucks. So I didn't know if that'd be something.
We could at least ask about it.
Yeah. Well, any other questions? Oh, Angie?
I have, yeah, about the buses for replacing, they're either the oldest or the highest mileage, is there something going on? Is there some new buses that need replaced though?
Um, it's more of the, the maintenance issues they've had with the buses. I don't have specifics, but both of those buses are identified by them as, as, as having more maintenance issues. And, and it's not necessarily always the year of the mileage. It just depends on what kind of mileage and, and the maintenance that was done to the buses.
Okay, well, they're pretty high rate, they just, they weren't cleaning, I mean, they weren't beating the asphalt, it's worth the having.
Right. I, I would anticipate in the next couple of years, we're gonna probably look at a driver's ed car, a van, and probably another bus. Not all of next year, but probably over the next couple of years to replace. So we, we do have some, you know, older buses, higher mileage buses that are getting to the point where we probably need to replace it just because of the, um, cost of maintaining them.
Yeah, it's because I can see that our oldest bus is actually one of the parts being broken by, by the bus.
And they're talking about the maintenance books, they said that someone who was on the really hard start, they're over here.
Uh, this is probably in here, I apologize for this, but it's. Uh, so it's the, the driver's ed car, how old is that?
But we have three.
How old?
Nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand four, two thousand eleven.
Oh, there, okay.
Ninety-eight is not used for driver's ed, that's just an extra car that's out at the garage that until November, I didn't know we had. Uh, but they use it for parts.
Oh.
Not, not, I, to run and get parts. They're not taking parts off the car. They said, they said it runs wonderfully. And we pay a fleet insurance cost, so it doesn't matter if we have thirteen vehicles or fifteen vehicles, we pay the same price for insurance. So the only extra cost on this is the cost of the license. So it's just, it's a convenience factor for them to have this vehicle run out, it'd be cheaper than running one of the vans out.
That makes sense. I'm just thinking, more than they've touched on is new technology. And if we're teaching these kids how to drive on a nineteen ninety-eight vehicle that doesn't have all the new bells and whistles, they're gonna get into all those new cars.
We put C, CD players in big blue boxes.
Oh, that'll be cool, the bat too?
Yeah. It can only sit three in. Don't write that in. It'd already be on the menu.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, I, I'm concerned you put a block heater in.
Well, especially with as cold as it, you know, yes, they're easier to, to warm up, but our buses do sit outside. So it, it would, it, you know, the advantage would be that it would start up a little bit easier. And the other thing, one of the things they talked about too, I'm going back through my head of the conversation, is the, the, how quick these buses interior heats up compared to the diesel. The diesel just doesn't heat up anywhere near as close as that.
Is a block heater necessary on a gas?
No, it's not necessary, but they, they think it's something that it's worth spending the money on because of where the buses sit outside.
That's what, you'll pull the heater too, just a little coil.
Fuel filter heater?
Yeah, just a little coil that goes underneath the, the filter. I know it's more for, for diesels, but.
Okay.
Okay.
So since we have some adjustments for me to look at, how should we?
I would just say as presented.
As presented?
Yeah.
A motion at this time? Make a motion. Is there a, a motion in the second?
Two seconds.
Uh, Dean? So this is a lot. We'll do a roll call?
Uh.
No, we'll pass.
No, we just, again, this is a bid.
Okay.
So, so, you can just make a motion.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any none? Motion passes. Next item.
All right, our auditor, um, Paul Volmer, has switched employers from our current auditor, Moore and Simonin, to a new, um, auditor, Sheffel Oil. Uh, because we're in the middle of the year, um, in order for Paul to keep looking at our, uh, books and for us to be able to keep contacting, um, Paul, we need to sign some papers. So my plan is to sign the papers and, and allow him to have access to our documents. If we are interested in, um, changing auditors or bidding this out, we can do that. Uh, we typically do that probably April, uh, to get things done, so that when they come in in July and August and do our audit, they would have enough time. But for, between now and then, I think it would be beneficial for us to stay with Paul, um, answering the questions. So again, there's no formal, um, motion needs to take place, I can sign, sign the papers.
Well, that's true though, if, if there's a vote made on who the, the, uh, the commodity company is gonna be, who's changed companies.
All, all, all we're doing is, I'm, I'm just, we're not really entering into a contract. I'm just signing papers that gives him, uh, access to our files.
But we don't have a contract that the, the company used before, because we voted on that.
We do, we do. But, but, so, they sent me, they sent me paperwork, uh, uh, whatever they call.
So they're willing to release the files?
They're, they're sending it to everybody that was, that Paul was using. And, um, my understanding is most people are following Paul. And so, um, basically what it does, it just, it just, it's, we got a letter from them, from, from.
Tell them to prioritize his clients.
Moore and Simonin, saying that, uh, if you would like to, for your files to be used by him, please sign this release. And then we got a letter from Sheffel Oil saying, now we have this guy, we'd love to have you follow him.
So, so what happens if we say no?
Then we, we talked to Moore and Simonin about who, who we're gonna start asking questions to.
Somebody who hasn't been looking at a file for ten years.
When are they paid?
Kind of thrown into the fire at the minute.
When, when are they paid for their services?
Um, I think we get billed monthly. I, 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 Dennis, I, I don't really know. I, I hate to say that.
And, uh, going along with, uh, with Vicky's comment, we had a contract, we're, we're paying for our contract.
So we pay them in the beginning of the year?
At the end of the summer.
Okay, so we, we pay them after they get finished with their audit, which happens in July.
So they, they put out this release, but if we've paid them for this year's end, this new company that Paul's working for is going to send us another bill, that, that would be my concern, that we don't get two bills for this particular year.
I'll, I'll check into that. I'll make sure they're not.
Otherwise, we finish and then go to them.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want them to even charge you the hours if they feel ready to put in, put before you move. And then try not to pay another company to the audit.
Yeah, there's a price for these.
Um, there, no. What I understand is Sheffel Oil's higher.
Substantial.
I don't know. I think, I think we'd have to bid it. But I think there's, I think there's more conversation that we can have closer to the bidding process.
As long as we're not gonna be charged twice.
Agreed.
Agreed. We shouldn't have to charge twice. There you go.
No surprises.
You have your direction.
I, I wrote down everything.
Next item.
All right, uh, this is the month where one of you fine people volunteer to help select the, uh, student board member for the eighteen nineteen, uh, school year. Jane has the applications. Uh, once we have that selected, uh, those will be sent out. And, uh, we'll arrange, uh, interviews for those that are interested. So if anybody's interested.
Ray just last year?
Right. He was really good.
He did a great job.
He's awesome.
Oh, dude, he.
Oh, wonderful.
He lets anybody really.
The, the motion needed, Ray is the main.
We just need Ray to raise his right hand.
Nobody else wants to.
Okay. Yeah, uh, the next is, um, a, uh, I'm asking to have a change in Board Policy seven point one oh. Uh, this is a policy that contains, um, a kind of a, a date, drop dead date for, uh, students to have all their documentation in, otherwise they can no longer attend to high school. Historically, it's been October fifteenth. Um, we've, uh, looked at the policies, um, there is no reason not to have this moved up to the first part of the year. Um, and kind of put a little more pressure on those folks that, um, don't get documentation turned in in time. So what I'm asking is that we change the date to August first, so that when they, when they come into registration, if they don't have their documentation, legally they can't register. And, and this will say, the, the nurse, lots of headaches, this will say, the office, lots of headaches. And, uh, as long as we give them a six day notice, we are allowed to change the date. So that's why we need to go through with the policy.
Any questions on this one?
Is, is there gonna be heartburn created by going with August first versus first day of school?
Well, if, if, we don't go with first day of school. That, that was the reason we picked August first. And it, August first allows us typically, all, our registration's always after. And that way we can, then, you know, you missed your deadline, you don't have your documentation. Unless you have it with you, you can't register. And so that gives us a chance to let them know. And registration's typically about a week or so before school. So then, you know, you've got a week to get this in before you're allowed to register.
Isn't that a common practice with most schools?
Uh, the Bell schools, a lot of Bell schools have, have gone to this.
This needs to make more sense, you know, this way, I don't know, they go, they enroll and they're here for a, a month and then, you know, it's a, it's a median, it's a, you know.
It creates quite a heartache on administration's side when you have to call people and say, oh, by the way, you've been going here for two and a half months, now it's the middle of the semester, now you can't. And we, this year we had a student that probably missed a week, and, and they're unexcused. So they, they don't have the documentation, so by law they, they, they had to be told they can't come back.
This, this seems like this, this thing cleaning up.
Yeah.
People, when they get to the starting line, will be upon the starting line.
If this is up concerns as well, Courtney Travis, our school nurse, has already been going through every single junior physical file, medical, to see that they, especially meningitis, that they've got this, um, shot. They have to have at least one after the age of sixteen, which has kind of been our baby hangup the last two years. So she's already been going through all the junior files, sending emails, calling parents, notifying them. So it's not like it's gonna be like, hey, we're changing this date and no one knows. I mean, she already has started that process, we'll send out more information. Um, just, again, they have everything at the beginning of school. Because once they're in, it's so much harder to, to get it done versus, you, you know, when you show up for registration, you gotta have your cert vice certificate, your immunization, everything, just get it done. So I definitely know, I, I agree, I, I greatly appreciate just getting it more streamlined, getting it out of the way.
It just seems like the right thing to do.
I have more answers. The concept, I was just questioning, would you put the money with that first day of registration or, or you put a hard date on? If that's the only question.
And that's why we do it, because we just don't know when, uh, registration or the first day is.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
I move to approve first reading of District Policy seven point one zero zero as presented.
A motion?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consider none. Motion carries. All right, now we're on to, uh, Board Correspondents.
Uh, none.
None? Addendum items?
None.
Okay, we have a reason to go to closed session, thank you.
Do, uh, we have, uh, for, uh, negotiations and personnel, uh, possible litigation, uh, real estate, uh, transactions, and evaluations.
We need a motion to go to closed session. Motion, seven minutes to go, drill.
Aye.
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 Okay. Close session, thanks for coming.
We win or lose?
We lost.
Move to keep the minutes of the listed closed sessions closed for the reasons provided.
Thank you. Start with Rick.
Aye.
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 I move to approve Brenda Whitworth and Ernie Kopp as volunteer assistants for the two thousand eighteen track season.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Right.
I'm jacking around here, what's the next thing?
I want you to say aye.
Aye. Your name.
Your name.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to accept the resignation of Ms. Lori Krunk as the head girls' basketball coach.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
Move to hire Bethany McQuiston as a girls' head basketball coach for the eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved. So it'll be aye?
Aye.
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 Angie?
Motion passes.
Aye.
I move to approve the hiring of Fritz Holcomb and Randy Riker as assistant football coaches for the eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 So passes.
I move to accept the resignation of Tammy Louts as cashier worker.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to hire Ms. Lori Krunk as assistant principal for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year at a salary to be determined at a later date.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. That's it? Any motions to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.